Good morning, and my name is Mary Stroffert. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, as well as a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. I have the pleasure of moderating this forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, I would like to welcome everyone. The League of Women Voters is pleased to present this pre-general election forum for ISD 709 Duluth School Board at Large and District 3 seats. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to participate in local government and in this event. The League of Women Voters believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. The League of Women Voters Duluth realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. Let us pause to acknowledge our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people from a mix of abilities and backgrounds in all of our activities. You are invited to join us. For more information, check our website The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan voluntary organization that works at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a league, do study and take stance on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at this forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters of Duluth. Additionally, LWV sponsorship of this forum is not a league endorsement of any of the individual candidates participating. Please remember to exercise your right to vote on Tuesday, November 7. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for ISD 709 at-large school board candidates, Stephanie Williams and Frances Wittenberg. Alana Oswald is also an at-large candidate and could not be here today. She has provided us with an empty chair statement. We also have with us ISD 709 District 3 school board candidates, Henry Banks and Lauren Martel. Thank you all for being here. Our forum will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement, followed by the questioning round. Questions have been vetted by our Voter Services Committee. Candidates were not given the questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes in which to provide their response. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will ask questions in a rotating order. The order in which candidates will respond was determined at random, and we will rotate the responses through the forum. After the questioning round is completed, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement. Alana Oswald has sent an empty chair statement, which will be shared as well. We will begin with the opening statements. But first, we're going to... In accordance with the CDC guidelines for COVID infections, candidate Oswald is not with us today. She has submitted an empty chair statement in her absence, and we will begin with her statement. Greetings. I apologize for not being in person. I tested positive for the first time ever for COVID and am having a very rough experience, as one with multiple medical issues which put me at high risk of complications. I value the efforts of the League of Women Voters and the service they bring to the community. I openly tried to negotiate a much more equitable solution for my participation, including taping another day myself, moving the taping day, and would have explored virtual options. Yet, the League of Women Voters declined citing their empty-chair policy. I believe this policy is inequitable in today's environment as it was written before COVID changed the way our world works. I was forced to choose to put myself at a disadvantage by not showing up or by attending, thus putting those around me at a significant health risk in order to have a level playing field. I am choosing the benefit to my community and trying to stop the continued spread of a dangerous virus. I hope that speaks to those watching more than my hour of answers I'll be missing. This is a prime example of the hard questions I've asked in the school district since joining in 2016. Inequities exist, hidden in plain sight. If someone isn't there, willing to start the conversation, nothing changes. I ask those hard questions. Changes happen as a result. The district is a more equitable place than when I began because of this. Yet, we have a long road and lots of decisions to consider. I need allies on the board with me to support these questions and make a greater impact. ISD 709 schools have been on my home growing up. The relationships with staff helped create who I am. Students depend on these relationships and contribute to student success. In nearly eight years on the board, I've championed student causes. I've improved the district for all students with Minnesota Department of Education mandated curriculum updates. I helped develop the education equity framework and am most experienced in community equity work on the board. I'm tough on policy and finance, while making governance choices that have required the district be accountable, helping more students succeed than when I started. Please Google and watch the Duluth News Tribune and Duluth Chamber of Commerce forum available for free online. My participation there gives a good glimpse at how I value the school board work I do. Please help me continue helping our kids do better and the district be better by allowing me to continue another four years with your vote. Thank you. So, we will begin with opening statements. And candidate Wittenberg, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Frances Wittenberg, a proud mother with three amazing children, a wife, retired veteran, a servant leader, a change agent, a trusted realtor, and an artist. Although I don't have experience in campaigning and I failed to meet the school district's deadline to file for candidacy on time, I am running a write-in, nonpartisan campaign for the ISD 709 Duluth School Board at Large because I care about the families and our children's future. As a mother of three ambitious children, my active involvement with my children's school began when we moved to the city of Duluth. After attending a few school board meetings and my children's PTA meetings, interacting with administrative leaders and teachers, volunteering as a playground and cafeteria monitor, I have seen and heard firsthand the many challenges that our school community are encountering. After seeing firsthand how decisions are being made by school board leaders, I am deeply concerned with how things operate at the district level. With over 21 years of active-duty military experience, I want nothing more than to continue to serve the schools throughout the school district by offering leadership and management experience. I can provide a quality service to the school district and meet the needs of students and everybody in the community. Throughout my campaign, I demonstrated community engagement and actively listened to people at various levels. I have proposed initiatives, and I would like to see them follow through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from candidate Martel.
Hello, and thanks for listening and thanks to the League of Women Voters. My name is Lauren Martel. I've been paying close attention to the school board of ISD 709 for several years and have run previously for the board. My election opponents have often had long lists of things he or she is promising to do if elected. Often, they've used phrases like "moving forward", but the future is built on the past. And I think it is incumbent on good leaders to learn from the past and not repeat past mistakes. It's common knowledge that a broken promise can erode trust. As I've gone door-to-door in the center of the city, during this campaign, I've found a lot of mistrust towards the school board. I've been hearing stories of broken promises going back 50 years. But it was during the last decade and a half that the trust covenant was truly broken. Initially, I was going to run through all those broken promises, but I don't think I'm going to do that here. I'm just going to state that, you know, I've been through all of this saga for well over a decade and a half now. And because I understand what the people of Duluth have been through, I believe I can be the best candidate to restore that trust. Thank you again for listening to us.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from candidate Banks.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for all of your excellent work in our communities and across the country and the world. I always want to say, "We all do better when we all do better." Those are the words of the Honorable Late Senator from Minnesota, U.S. Representative Paul Wellstone. Those words resonate with me to this day. I have been an advocate for children and families for over 35 years in Duluth, and I'm going to continue being an advocate for families and children on the ISD 709 Duluth School Board. My mentors were Ruth Myers and Marge Wilkins. I honor them today for their dedication to families and children for all intents and purposes. They were my mentors, and they were my guide during my educational experiences in Duluth. I honor and dedicate my candidacy to Ray Skip Sandman for his commitment to children and families of ISD 709. While he was with us, his commitment never wavered. I'm running for Duluth School Board to make a difference in the lives of children and families because we need to do something different. We need to stop harboring years and years and years of negativity in our school district. We have to move forward. We cannot continue with the justification of 16-plus years ago. We have to move forward, and it's something that we cannot stop doing because it's about our children and their future. If we don't move forward, if we continue to stay in the past, we'll never be the school district that we need to be for our children. It's all about diversity and inclusion and commitment to diversity and inclusion. And if we, as a community, would embrace diversity and inclusion, all of our students, our children, our families in ISD 709 will be better for it. I'm running because I want to make a difference in the lives of our number-one consumer, that being our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from candidate Williams.
Good morning, and thank you. I am Stephanie Williams, and I'm very grateful to be here today. I thank the League of Women Voters and also my colleagues for their time this morning. I am a single mom who was raised by a single mom in West Duluth. My mom was well-known in the district, and when she moved us here, she was the only Black teacher in all of Duluth Public Schools. She mentored other influential and well-respected teachers. I grew up in the Lincoln Park neighborhood and attended Lincoln Park School and Denfeld High School. I went on to get my bachelor's degree from UW Superior. I've worked for nonprofits and corporations. While at Community Action Duluth, I piloted the Bridge to Employment Program, where I helped Black and Indigenous parents gain meaningful employment. Those challenges that some of the participants faced led me to create Community Action's first GED program, which I am immensely proud of, and that program still stands today. I work for Duluth Public Schools in American Indian Education, federal programs, and vocational programs. I was a proud member of Education Minnesota, a co-facilitator of the Care Academy, which was a DEI program for teachers and support staff. Currently, I work in economic development. I am one of the co-founders of the Twin Ports by PAC Business Directory, and I serve on the Duluth 1200 Fund Board, as well as the FUSE Duluth Advisory Board. This past June, I graduated from Leadership Duluth. I am running because I am passionate about this community and the kids in this community, and I would be honored to earn your vote and be the next at-large school board member.
Thank you. Now, we'll share questions solicited and submitted by organizing committee and questions submitted to the League of Women Voters website. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond, and we will begin with candidate Williams. The first question is, "What is your assessment of the current strengths and weaknesses of the Duluth Public Schools?"
Sure. I love that question. I will start with weaknesses. I think that one of the glaring, obvious things that the district is missing is representation, and that is from the top down. As I said in my opening statement, in the '90s, there was one Black teacher in all of Duluth Public Schools, which was my mother, who unfortunately passed away in 2015, shortly after she retired. In that time, she mentored the student-teacher, Jabba Edmonds, who became the only Black teacher after my mom retired. I do know that we have a social studies teacher right now at Denfeld High School, who I have yet to meet, but it's a problem that we are lacking diversity when it comes to our administration, as well as our teaching staff. Our strengths, though, are in the staff that we do have, our teachers and our support staff, who go in day in and day out and serve our kiddos. I know from my mom, I know from growing up, that our teachers put in their own blood, sweat, tears, and finances, and that is because of a deep compassion for our students. And I hope to work with those teachers moving forward.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from candidate Banks.
Thank you for the question. First and foremost, I would like to say that ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools have a lot of strengths. That being said, I would say the number-one strength at ISD 709 is its students. That's why we are here today, to make the quality of education the best it can be for ISD 709 students. Having said that, our teachers are strong professionals, some of the best teachers in the state of Minnesota, and then not leaving out our professional staff, who are there every day alongside our children to make sure that they're safe and that they're getting the resources that they need to succeed academically, socially, and otherwise. So, we are doing some really great things in ISD 709, but there are, obviously, we could say that there's room for improvement. We all need improvement in all aspects of our lives. For ISD 709, I think the opportunity... I don't call it a weakness. I say the opportunities that ISD 709 has is that it now has the opportunity to improve upon its abysmal diversity and inclusion standards across the board. And when seated on the board, that's one of the first things I want to do, is to help ISD 709 get to the point where we become an award-winning, higher-education-enabled and otherwise, to make sure that our kids, when they walk out the door, they're ready for technical school, they're ready for higher education beyond what is expected of them. They have the opportunity to choose what they want to do for their lives, and I think that we have the opportunity to make this happen. And I want to be that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from candidate Wittenberg.
Thank you. So, the question is, "What is your assessment of ISD 709 strengths and weaknesses?"
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So, I'm going to start off with the opportunities that we have here in ISD 709, the strengths. Coming from Oklahoma, that's where I was stationed with my family, we didn't have that much opportunities. And it's refreshing to be able to come over here to the city of Duluth and know that the school district has so many opportunities, whether it is through music, art, through sports. And we're very grateful to have that. I also wanted to point out the strengths of the school community to the support staff, the teachers, to the administrators, to the student leaders, and most especially the parents, the working parents out there, who have to dedicate their extra time to ensure that their kids are not only safe or provided for, but they also are the ones behind the scenes raising funds for the booster clubs and for the sports programs. And endless opportunities are there for us. It's just that the parents are the ones who's dedicating their time for that. And so, what we need to do as a weakness... I identified a weakness, and I see that there's also a lack of transparency. And I want to make sure that when we look at transparency, I'm looking at transparency from up and down and all across the board through the school community. There's also a lack of change management. And through all these weaknesses, I've learned that we can overcome them and be able to talk to and have those meaningful conversations with our school community, the parents. We need to go back to meeting and seeing the academics' scores, which making sure that everybody is proficient in reading, math, and in science, and maintain and build trust within the school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Candidate Martel.
Well, there's, you know, you can go on quite at length at all these questions. I think the greatest strength of the district is that it's the legacy of educational venue in the city. There's a lot of longstanding goodwill towards the schools, a lot of tradition there. They're the biggest player in the marketplace. And of course, a lot of people look at the public schools first when they decide whether to send their children. In terms of weaknesses, you know, there's a couple of big ones that come to mind. The east-west divide has been a real challenge for the district. How we're going to solve that is going to be complicated and hard to do, but we have to somehow solve it because it is a continuing problem. Another problem, of course, is financial. Six and a half million more dollars came in from the state, and the district is already asking for nearly eight million more from the public. So, they're continually struggling financially. I do think that some of that is a problem from board leadership and a failure to plan adequately. I think there's been a lot of failures that way in terms of money management, and the board is responsible for fiscal control. And so, that's one thing I would bring to the school board myself.
Thank you. Our next question concerns the levy that is on the November ballot. Do you support the levy that will be on the ballot? And please explain why or why not. And we will start with candidate Martel.
Well, first of all, there are two referendum questions, and everybody keeps asking, so there's one. But there are two, and I would like to divide that out a bit. The first one is a bond referendum, and that is trying to take away the burden that the school board has been dealing with, pulling a lot of money out of the general fund to pay for buildings. It has hurt the district tremendously to do that. So, what they're asking is for the public to take on that bond debt, $22 million of bond debt. I think it's going to be a hard sell for the public and myself. I find it difficult to back that because most of that is red-plan debt, and the public really had no say in that from the beginning. The other one is a capital levy, and that one is earmarked principally for technology, and it's also, in the long run, being put in place to offset projected deficits from the run-out of COVID money. So, whether or not the public will support that, myself, I love some of the things that they're claiming they're going to do with seven periods in the high school. For example, with high schools would be an excellent thing. But it's very hard with the levy going up the way it has. It's gone up 300% since Keith Dixon came to town at the end of '05. $32 million a year, that's a big burden on the taxpayers. And I'm hearing door-to-door that the taxpayers are bending under that burden.
Thank you. Candidate Wittenberg.
Yes, thank you. So, the question was, "What are my concerns with the levy and whether or not I support or do not support the referendums?" Okay. So, thank you, Lauren, candidate Lauren Martel, for the background information about the two referendums. And that's exactly what it is, restructuring bond referendum and the technology support. What I want to do is I want to be able to empower all families, community members, students, school administrators, to be able to read up on that because there's more to it than just the title. So, what I would like to do is I would like to ask the question to the superintendent's and to the school board and to the community, "Have we done our job as school district to ensure that we set up our children for success? Did we do our job to make sure that our students are meeting the standards of reading, math, and science? Are we doing our job to manage and allocate funds for our school district for the next fiscal year?" Once we have already resolved that issue, we can move forward and protect and support the children at best. We want to make sure that we do what's best now before we move forward with this strategic plan. My personal opinion, I vote no for the two referendums. And I have reasons to believe that we have to do something more than just support technology and do more restructuring our bond debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from candidate Williams.
Thank you. I do support the referendum in both parts. The technology part is very... Excuse me. Is very important for equity across the board, across the school district, ensuring that all of our students have the technology they need and to stay level with how education is moving across the nation, yeah, across the world. Yes. The pandemic really highlighted the need for technology for each student, and I think we need to continue on with that. I think we need to be able to support the need for technology in internet use and updating laptops and Chromebooks for each student. The other part is that if the referendum fails, we will have to lay off teachers, and that will only increase the problems that we're having as far as overcrowding in classrooms, what is offered in East Duluth versus West Duluth, and then equity issues as well. And so, I support the referendum in order to support each student and in order to keep our schools fully staffed, which has finally happened this year.
Thank you. And candidate Banks.
Thank you for the question. I wholeheartedly support the upcoming referendums on November 7 because, again, for me, it is about doing the best we possibly can for the best possible education for every child in ISD 709. Right now, we are not doing that. We have children of color that are lagging behind other students because they don't have the technology, for example, in their homes. They don't have the resources that they need for their success in the academic community, in the classroom with their peers. We have to do something from the standpoint of making sure that we have more teachers. We have to do something from the standpoint of making sure that we have more teachers, that we support our teachers, that we support technology for every single student. Uh, to to be quite honest, some children, when they go home, they do not have that technology. Once that technology enters into their home, it may provide opportunities not only for the students, but for their parents who may not have access to computers to search for jobs, to get those jobs, to vi- then vi- finally be able to support their families. Uh, it it has a wide ef- effect, and I support this because it's the right thing to do. ISD seven oh nine wants to improve its quality of education, and I believe we as voters can help do that and make sure that our kids get every resource they need to succeed when they walk out that door. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, starting with candidate Banks, is about solar power. Several grant cycles for solar power occurred without an application from ISD seven oh nine. What is your position on converting Duluth schools to solar power?
Thank you for that question. I've never had that question before. And I, to be honest with you, uh as I'm trying to be in everything I respond to today, uh I think it is uh an appropriate thing to do uh for ISD seven oh nine. Uh, it's appropriate from the standpoint that it could serve to uh alleviate some of the pressures that our taxpayers are paying uh with regard to our schools. Uh, it has the potential to save a lot of money uh for the district, again, for the taxpayers, most importantly. And I believe everything that we can do uh in support of solar activity in every school building, every administrative building within the district, we need to pursue that. Uh, we need to pursue it from the standpoint that it is the way of the future. And I think these resources, again, will come back to the district then to serve our taxpayers even better, even from the standpoint of people paying attention to the district and what they're doing to save money. And uh, yes, let's do that, and let's do it for the taxpayers, for the students. But let's make our students and our schools, if you will, the best they can be, even from that standpoint. So it gets beyond uh uh the education of our students. It goes beyond to the point of let's making sure that our resources are used wisely, and this is a way that we can do that.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll hear from candidate Williams.
Thank you. The initial investment in into converting to solar power and solar energy, um, that that might be be great. However, the the long-term effects will save the district and and Duluthans money. Um, so I I support that. Um, converting converting district uh facilities and buildings will create jobs and opportunities, education opportunities for students, um as far as um learning about solar power and science and and all of that. But it it will create jobs ac- across um Duluth too. And so I absolutely support converting to solar energy.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll hear from uh candidate Martel.
Well, this is a perfect example of what I've been talking about in planning and doing proper planning. We should have already had active solar if if the promises of the red plan had come through. As we were told, they were supposed to be lead-certified silver level, and that would have included active solar. But the board rescinded that without um still saying they were being guided by silver level, but they dropped certification and it meant nothing without certification. So that's one of the reasons that we've got to make sure that when we're promised things, that it delivers. I mean, we spent a lot of money. We were supposed to have the greenest schools in the state, and we failed to do that. Um, that was another broken promise, and that lot of money was thrown around on that promise. So, again, this is an example of why we've got to do a better job delivering on the promises. And that's why you have to look at the past and not repeat the past mistakes. Everyone that keeps telling me they're moving forward seem to have no idea about what happened in the past. And then they just keep making the same mistakes. So I do I do support it, of course. Anybody with any common sense should see that solar, active solar is a very good thing. But to be now trying to catch up on something that should have happened more than ten years ago is a failure. It's a failure of proper planning. It's a pro- failure of proper use of taxpayer money. And we're running, we're running after our ourselves over and over again here because of poor planning and because the problems keep being repeated.
Thank you. And um candidate Whittenberg.
Thank you. So just wanna make sure that I'm hearing you. So you're asking about my opinion about the solar counter panel? For solar power?
Just if you have a po- position on it.
Okay. I do have a position on solar power. I also know that I'm not an expert at how we can conserve energy. The big thing here is we need to focus on the education and improving the academics in our schools throughout the school district. And within the school uh school board at large, I, my goal is to make sure that each district, District one, two, three, and four, are first are given the opportunities and we're meeting their needs. Once we've done that, then I need to reach out to the community members, to the students, parents, uh administrators, all the way up to the district, and ask them, what's your opinion about having or implementing solar power to be able to eventually uh be cost-effective in the future? As of right now, we are trying to rebuild the trust within the community and to ask them about the, what we think about solar pow- solar power. I think that'll be a great strategic plan, but not at this moment, this current state. What we need to do is we need to ensure that our schools are safe, including in the buses, on the restrooms, to make sure that our s- our schools are equipped to be able to give the tools and resources um our seniors need in order to be productive adults and to be able to be successful in life. We need to be able to give our elementary school students the opportunity to be able to not only learn, but to be able to stay resilient, giving them the opportunity to play outside more, being able to hear them and be able to socialize with their other peers. I think what we need to do now is think about now and then be bring in the whole community to talk about how we're going to implement solar power in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, and we will be starting with candidate Whittenberg. Please describe your views on the presence of school resource officers in our school and the relationship between schools and law enforcement.
Thank you. So my viewpoints regarding about the SROs, SROs, the student resource officers in our schools, has been an eye-opener for me. Since we relocated here into the city of Duluth, I wasn't used to having SROs in our uh children's school back when we were in Arkansas, Oklahoma, Florida, to all the way to California and Washington. So when you mentioned about SROs, I believe, just having my interaction with them and seeing what they do, it's a huge advantage for us to make sure that we have, when I say we, I'm talking about parents and the community members. We know and trust that our school will be safe, that our children will be safe. Those are our number one resources out there. We wanna make sure that we maintain that relationship with the SROs. We also need to be mindful that I, I'm all about forward-thinking. You know, we wanna make sure that we protect our children and the staff from any threats that takes place in the school, including active shooters to anybody who decides to cause harm to our community. And it is important that we support SROs, good, bad, or indifferent. We all have our opinions about law enforcement and SROs. The question is, did we do our best to ensure that they are equipped to make sure that our kids are safe? And that's one of the reasons why I wholeheartedly believe the SROs is a positive, most beneficial um profession in our school community. And I know for a fact that having them defend our, defend our school districts is a plus, and we'd love to see more SROs in each school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from candidate Martel.
Well, unfortunately, it's just the way of the world. Now, I I I I'd be very reluctant to um lose the school resource officers. It's just an unfortunate um thing. I've said it before in in previous years and previous forums that, um, you know, it it's it's not only um the protection of the children, et cetera. Of course, that's that's um preeminent, but um the the other part of it is um just liability issues. Um, the school board is responsible to protect the public against liability issues. I know there was an incident out in Colorado, I believe, where they pulled their resource officers out, and then there was a problem. There was lawsuits flying around. So there is that aspect to it as well. That's very important to keep in mind. Um, obviously, we have to make sure that they're well-trained and there's no issue in terms inequity, the way students are being treated. And we don't want the people protecting students to in any way end up um causing harm that way. We we uh we have to make sure that that we're monitoring it and that they're well-trained. And and I think the school board has been doing a pretty good job on that. But I do also think that the school resource officers have a right to have clear parameters in which they can operate, so that they're not putting themselves in any kind of civil or criminal liability risk when when they do take an action in the school. So I am for clarifying that 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 part of the legislation on the state level.
Thank you. Um, candidate Williams.
Thank you. In the last twenty-five years, um, we've we've really seen an increase in in school shootings nationally, which is devastating and and, yeah, devastating. It would it would be even more devastating for Duluth schools to become as infamous as Columbine or Uvalde or Sandy Hook. Um, that's something that this community would not be able to withstand. I I appreciate officers' commitment to protect and serve this community. And in that sense, I I do support um school resource officers um to to keep our our students and our teachers safe.
Thank you. And candidate Banks.
Would you um please repeat the question?
Yes. Please describe your views on the presence of SROs in the school and the relationship between school and law enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a different approach to SROs um in schools. I do support them being in schools. However, uh my support is this. I would support them and their continuance if they are fair-minded and equitable as it relates to all children of ISD seven oh nine schools. Currently, I do not believe that they are. So what that says to me is that there needs to be more training, in addition to the training that they've received. Uh, because our demographics are changing uh all over the United States, including Duluth, Minnesota. And if our children of color, for example, do not see people that look like them, uh, that is going to be a continual problem. Uh, SROs are good in that they provide safety for our kids, for our teachers, for our professional staff, and others associated with ISD seven oh nine schools. I believe they must have trauma-informed training. They need to know what's going on in the lives of families and what our kids are coming to school with when they suddenly have a behavior issue. If they don't have that training, it is imperative that ISD seven oh nine school district provides that training so that we have fairness and equitability even at our SRO level. Thank you.
Thank you. Current, let's see, this one. Uh, the district educates students pre-K through twelve. Curriculum is aligned with state standards. What is the role of the school board regarding decisions about curriculum? What is the role of teachers and district administrators concerning curriculum? And we will be starting with candidate Banks.
Thank you. So it sounds like this is a two-part question. Um, first and foremost, I think ISD seven oh nine uh has some opportunities to improve its curriculum. Uh, right now, uh in the school district, uh what I've found is is there are no courses uh that reflect the demographics fully of ISD seven oh nine. There are no courses that uh talk about or educate our children about Asian Americans or Asian influence on education and America. There's nothing in our curriculums that educate our kids on African-American or African heritage uh contributions uh in this country, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We are missing out on real strong opportunities here if we don't have those types of courses available to all students, not just BIPOC students, but to all students. So that then, when they leave that school, when they graduate from our high schools, they are hopefully going to be prepared for the real world, because the real world is going to look different than what they see today. And we need to involve teachers in that decision-making. We need to involve parents in that decision-making as it relates to the curriculum. We also must have the school board to guide our superintendent, the associate superintendent, those in charge of curriculum, to make sure that we start to look at what the real world looks like. Right now, we're not doing that in ISD seven oh nine. I think we have opportunities to do so now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Williams.
Will you please repeat the question?
Yes. The district educates students pre-K through twelve. Curriculum is aligned with state standards. What is the role of the school board regarding decisions about curriculum? What is the role of teachers and district administrators concerning curriculum?
Thank you. We have a responsibility to to look at the standards that come from MDE, Minnesota Department of Education. We we have a responsibility to look at that and compare to what what our standards are um in our local, at our local level in here in Duluth. Um, with that said, I I think there are opportunities to welcome um community input and and parent input, welcoming um community members into schools and classrooms um in in terms of to to follow up on on what um Mr. Banks was saying, um other cultural um opportunities in in education. One of the things that we do here in the district is different cultural nights at at different sites, and that exposes students to different opportunities that might not be there in the classroom. I would I would love to go down as as a school board member, go down to St. Paul and be a part of legislation that en- includes a more well-rounded um approach to education and and what's included in our curriculum, including um different cultures, different um aspects of history, all of American history, um and world history. Uh, but yeah, I as a school board member, I I know that it is, it's part of our responsibility to go to St. Paul to talk to our our legislators and and to be a part of those discussions with MDE. Um, and then bring that back to our our teachers and administrators. So that is what the role is in those two capacities.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh ca- candidate Whittenberg.
Thank you. So as far as school board members' role when aligning with state standards to ensure that our children are and students are receiving the curriculum based off of what Ma- Minnesota Department of Education has been um has been developing. As far as my viewpoints on that, the school board role is to be able to represent- As far as my viewpoints on that, the school board role is to be able to represent the community, to include parents. Guardians and students. We need to be able to be the voice and to advocate for those who believe that their curriculum needs to be revamped. Or it needs to be looked at, or it needs to be brought into a new uh new approach. Our educators and teachers have gone through school to be able to teach our students. They receive this certification and I would like to see, as a school board member. I would like to see more empowerment for the teachers to be able to have the freedom to teach the lessons that they have been trained to do. I also believe that community engagement starts with us, starts with the community. And school board members need to be mindful of that. Not everybody is going to agree with the curriculum. Not everybody's going to agree with the decisions that the board members make. But it's important as school board members that we communicate constructively, objectively. And to be able to give a purview of what the curriculum would look like. So that we we as parents can be able to be informed, to be able to understand where the 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 changes are going to take place. And to be able to educate and support the curriculum changes. So that we can show our children that their education. Has been highlighted as making sure that they're set up for success. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Martel?
Well, I wish a lot of us who were here, um, she did a great job showing what the board should do about twelve years back. When she single-handedly forced the the district to revamp its curriculum to state standards. I always gave her a lot of credit for that. You know, it it's it's going to be a debate in the community. I I agree completely with um candidate Whittenburg that. This is a a decision that you have to bring in there from your constituents um and have a full debate about it. There's certainly a lot of debate about um exactly what the curriculum should be, whether it should be core academics or more um social-related. And that debate, let's have that debate in the in the boardroom. That is the board's responsibility to have that debate and make that decision. Uh, I will say a lot of it does come down to us from the MDE. And I think we're going to have trouble actually meeting some of the mandates on on the curriculum and within the next few years. The money doesn't seem to be there to actually do that, so it's going to be a money problem. I do think uh also that the board is responsible for structuring things for the curriculum. And seven periods would definitely help in making that tradition or or transition, sorry. To that to that change that is being mandated by the state. So the board does have a lot of practical um input into this whole um discussion. But ultimately, they have to represent their constituents and have that debate and decide which way to go.
Thank you. This will be our last question. How would you try to build relationships with community, students, and staff members within the district boundaries? And we will start with um candidate Martel.
Well, I'm going to have to ask you to read that one more time.
Okay. How would you try to build relationships with community, students, and staff members within the district boundaries? So within the district, how would you do that?
Just um between the board and and the people that are the public in ISD, within the boundaries of ISD seven oh nine.
Right, within the community.
Yeah. Well, you know, first of all, as it's been brought up here a few times, um, you know, it has to be very transparent. The board has struggled with that, and they still are struggling with getting the meetings out in the open. I would I would be very focused on on opening everything up to the public as much as possible. You know, when it comes to, for example, um making decisions regarding property acquisition. The state says they doesn't, they don't have to have an open meeting, but that doesn't mean that they can't have one. Just because they don't have to. And so I I would, whenever I'm able to open things up to the public, I certainly would. I mean, when I go door to door, I'm astonished how little the public really knows about what the district is doing. I've talked to hundreds of people in the middle of the city, for example. I'd say at best five percent even know that they built two brand-new multimillion-dollar buildings up on the central property. They don't even know it, and they have absolutely no no idea that they have a thirty-nine-and-a-half-million-dollar bill coming from that. And so again and again, the public seems like they feel like they've been bushwhacked by the board. Because it's it's just the lack of transparency has been um just a persistent problem all the years I've been watching it. And I I just think at the at the end of the day, the best way to build trust is let the public in and get their legitimate input. And have them, let them have a vote and have a say as as much as you can and inform them about exactly what your intent is.
Thank you. Um, candidate Whittenburg?
So the question was, how would you try to build relationship with the school community, students, and teachers?
And the larger community.
And the larger communities, okay. So if elected as ISD seven oh nine school board at large. My goal is to continue with the priorities that I have set forth for myself and for for our students. And that is transparency, uh open and honest communication amongst the members in the school district and with the community and parents. And by doing so, by looking at and evaluating and observing how things operate within the school district. I can already tell that there is a huge disconnect in communication. If we're going to try to set up our tool for success, if we're trying to invest in education, if we're going to try to allocate our funds more. More strategically, we need to include the parents and the guardians and the families. They're also the ones who are holding us in as well. So I propose and create and implement a Duluth Parents Advisory Committee. And I say that because I had experience being able to manage and to be able to. To be able to facilitate the committee into trying to brainstorm. And come up with ways to implement programs and to be able to help improve the education system. That includes the programs and policies that is mandated at the state level. And I can reassure you that if we build that relationship with our community members. We're going to see a lot of buy-in and a lot of understanding and mutual respect for one another to ensure that, at the end of the day. Did we do our best as a community to provide for our children academically and make sure that they are safe? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, candidate Banks?
Thank you. How would you try to build relationships with community, with students, with staff members, with the general public? It's easy. We have to do it as school board members. Because that is our primary obligation, first and foremost, to the taxpayer. We have to open up the opportunities for communication. The transparency should be number one. We should not keep anything from the taxpayer with regard to the public education that we are providing to the children of ISD seven oh nine. I would work uh to build upon what's going on currently with regard to leadership in ISD seven oh nine. We have to open up those opportunities in such a way that that trust level that we talk about often not being there. That we work to build that trust, bring it back to the community, because we want ISD seven oh nine to, uh, if you will. We've lost a lot of students. We've lost a lot of parents right here in this city to other school districts in the region. We have to figure out how we are going to bring those students and parents back to our school district. By providing the best quality education in the whole entire region. And the best transparency and open-mindedness from our school board and our school leaders. We have to build that trust. We have to hone in that trust. We have to do everything possible to make ISD seven oh nine Duluth Public Schools the best school district in this region. And in the state of Minnesota. And it starts by doing the right thing and being transparent and open-minded to our transparency. Levels within the district as it relates to trans uh our taxpayers, excuse me. Not feeling well today, but I wanted to be here because it's important that I share what I'm hoping to do with ISD seven oh nine. Once I'm a school board member and and being that leader to bring that transparency back is very important.
Thank you. Um, candidate Williams?
Thank you. I will build relationships with community, students, and staff members. By encouraging community to attend board meetings. I will host listening sessions. I will do site visits to know what's happening at specific school sites and and. Different schools have different needs, and I I want to be intimately aware of what those different needs are. As a candidate, I have met with teachers over coffee, parents, board members. And even had conversations with students, and that is something that I will continue to do as a school board member. Both on an individual basis, uh myself and um. Like I said, encourage people to come to school board meetings and and voice voice their opinions and concerns during that open forum time. I always want to have community input. I I know that that is vitally important to foster growth in our in our district. Hearing from community, hearing from students, hearing from taxpayers is always, always important. And so I want to continue to encourage that as a school board member.
Thank you. At this time, we will ask each candidate to give a two-minute closing statement. And we will be starting with um candidate Williams.
Thank you. I want to address um some things that have happened recently. There was a social media post that got a lot of attention um very recently. Because of the choice that my family made to send my son to a private school. That is a fact that I have never hidden. Uh, this attempt to disqualify me as a candidate highlighted a lack of understanding to some real everyday issues. That certain families face within Duluth Public Schools. As a former student of the Western Schools of Lincoln Park and Denfeld High School, and a parent of Lester Park Elementary. I was also an employee of the district. I am no stranger to these issues. I am running because I want Duluth Public Schools to be the choice that families make. I want to strengthen our community and in and around our schools. I want to look our disparities in the face and find solutions. I know and understand that different students have different needs and school choice is important. I will talk to families and ask how we can improve as a district. I will work to make Duluth Public Schools the choice of families, and I will do so by listening to the needs of the community. I have and will hold on to a willingness to learn, because I know being part of a board means collaboration. I don't and I won't have all the answers. But working in tandem with schools, families, and students, we will find solutions together. And create safe and welcoming spaces that foster lifelong learning. I don't want to merely win this election. I want to serve on the school board as service to my community. There's a quote by David Guerin. He is an author and an educator out of the state of Missouri. And he said, "Great school culture is not an accident. It happens when we recognize that we all depend on each other. And then work together to create supportive, caring conditions for everyone. Students, teachers, support staff, guests, everyone." I will be an ally and and bring bring a balance to the board with a voice that has long been excluded in this district. I thank you again for your time and the opportunity to address everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and my colleagues here.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll hear from candidate Banks.
Thank you very much. Um, I I want to say uh again to the League of Women Voters, thank you for allowing me to be here today. To uh express uh what I hope I would be able to offer to ISD seven oh nine and the students and families of the school district. I am the endorsed candidate from the Duluth Federation of Teachers, the Central Labor Body. AFSME Council Five, and I want to read a letter, another endorsement from a prominent uh professor of history at McAllister College. I've known Henry Banks for a number of years and consider him to be one of the bright lights in the field of education and community development. I have collaborated with Henry on several projects. As an educator, he has decided to live the committed life. He possesses a keen, creative intelligence that those looking after the education of our children must have in a time such as this. Characteristics such as honesty, decency, and integrity are the hallmarks of Henry. Anyone or organization should consider a blessing to have this good man join your your ranks. I consider it a pleasure and privilege to support Henry Banks for School District Three School Board. And I encourage all to support him with your resources, skills, volunteerism, and of course, your vote. Henrybanks.net for more information. Again, I thank you, uh, League of Women Voters, for this incredible opportunity. The letter I just read to you was from Professor Mahmoud Elkati. Who is a professor emeritus of history at McAllister College. And he has an endowed chair at that university uh in the Twin Cities. I again am the endorsed candidate, and I want to serve the children and families of ISD seven oh nine District Three. The entire school district, because I have what it takes. I have the stamina to move forward. To bring our district to the cutting edge of education, public education across America. And will get recognized for uh the incredible work that's being done here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Martel?
Well, thank you uh for this opportunity again. Uh, school board members have a dual role. Helping to shape the district's goal of educating children is an important responsibility. But board members also have a responsibility towards the general public and the taxpayers. Over the years, I've watched several board members act as though they are elected by the school district. They run the vested interests and seek those endorsements and adopt whatever those endorsements require as their agenda. During the DFL endorsement convention, one of the candidates declared, "They talk about nonpartisan." But I will tell everyone that I align myself with the DFL. What chance does anyone who doesn't embrace the party's agenda have to be represented in the boardroom? I've always spent many hours speaking to hundreds of people in the center of the city during this campaign. When I knock on someone's door, I introduce myself and ask what his or her opinion is about the school board. I don't lecture to anyone. I listen and respond to each person. In the last can candidate forum, and again this time, my opponent has read a lengthy personal recommendation by a professor from McAllister College. It is a very impressive endorsement of his candidacy. My recommendation for a seat on the school board is the more than one thousand votes I received from the people in the third district in the primary. Far exceeding any other candidate. If I win that seat in November, and I believe I will. It will be be because the majority of the people in the third district believe I will represent their agenda in the boardroom. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from uh candidate Whittenburg?
First off, I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters um for being able to allow me and the rest of the candidates here to be able to speak our truth. And to be able to share with you our platform and our priorities. I also want to uh want to thank my mentors, donors, my neighbors, volunteers, friends, and most importantly, my family for supporting me throughout my campaign. It wasn't an easy decision. Over the tw- with over twenty-one years of active-duty military service, I want to be able to continue to serve. The ISD seven oh nine school board at large and be able to connect with each district, one, two, three, and four. The families and the students, and to be able to provide a quality service to all of them. In addition to that, I would also like to provide quality service to our seniors who are about to graduate next year. In addition to that, I would also like to provide quality service to our seniors who are about to graduate next year and to be able to set them up for success so that they can be ready for the real world. Throughout my campaign, I demonstrated community engagement and actively listened to people at various levels and it's clear there is a disconnect between how district levels, district leaders communicate to their teachers, staff, employees, and parents and guardians. If elected as your next school board at large, there are several initiatives that I will propose to the public, which includes rebuilding trust and commitment to the ISD seven oh nine leaders. Teacher, staff, employees, and the school community involvement are necessary ensure we set the school district up for success. If you want to learn more about me, understand more about my priorities, my goals, and my mission, check out my website, gofranciswittenberg.com. Follow me on social media and don't forget to vote and write in my name, Frances Wittenberg, for ISD seven oh nine School Board at Large. Again, I'm here to advocate for all students, parents, and families. And my priority is to ensure school safety and student academic achievement is invested and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes this candidate forum for ISD seven oh nine School Board at Large and District Three. It is our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, you should feel free to contact candidates directly. You can also go online and find information about candidates at vote four one one. We hope this program has helped you learn more about the candidates and issues so that you can make an informed choice at the polls on Tuesday, November seventh. We thank the candidates and PAC TV for making this event possible. This forum is partially funded by a grant from the League of Women Voters Education Funds two thousand twenty-three People Who Are Formerly or Currently Incarcerated Voter Registration Project. PAC TV will carry this forum and others. Check their listing for a schedule of time. Links to these forums will also be on the League of Women Voters Duluth website. Thank you, everyone.